Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Work Session for Monday, March 9, 2009, here in the Eileen Dondaro-Foley Council Chambers. I'm calling the meeting to order, and then I'm going to turn it over to John Bohenko to talk about some preliminary budget matters, stimulus package, hiring freeze, et cetera. And then we'll have an opportunity for interaction with department heads as he goes forward. And with that, I will turn it over to John.
Thank you, Your Honor. Back on February 19th, I sent a memorandum to all department heads, and it was a memorandum that discussed some of the issues as it relates to the Governor's Budget. At the time, it appeared that the Governor was going to propose to reduce or suspend our revenue-sharing payments to cities and towns in New Hampshire, and that would affect our budget in terms of revenue by about $921,000 for next year. Excuse me, that would be the Meals and Rooms tax distribution would be $921,000. He also was looking at the suspension of revenue-sharing payments, which would be about $657,000. Further, the Governor within his budget talked about reducing the amount of subsidy that the state made for retirement from 35% to 30%. In the group two and teachers, the state does provide about 35% of that funding. We make up the rest here at the local level. All that pointed to about $1.8 million of lost revenue and increased expenditures that were unanticipated. It meant about 48 cents on the tax rate, in addition to what's going to happen with the county and another 4 cents from the county. So those are all things out of our control. Immediately, I discussed this matter with the mayor and as many council members as I could get a hold of. And one of the things that I thought was important is that to send out and ask department heads to implement a temporary hiring freeze. The reason that I wanted to go forward with a temporary hiring freeze is to have this meeting here tonight. From a philosophical standpoint, I believe that most of the departments, all the departments should live within their means, and they know how to live within their means. And certainly, as we go through this conversation, it would be my recommendation to continue to have department heads make those decisions where needed, when positions are needed to be filled, and to live in their means as the City Council directs as it comes through the budget process. And again, we are going to be in the middle of a fiscal 10 budget deliberations, and at the end of the day, in June, we're going to be adopting budgets for fiscal 10 for July 1st, 2009, through June 30th, 2010. And department heads should live within those means. And if the council feels that there should be reductions within those budgets, certainly there'll be long and vigorous conversations about those and how those will affect services for the community. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to provide you with copies of some revenue forecasts for next year. It has been very challenging over the last couple of weeks with regards to the Governor's Budget. On the one hand, we understand what he needs to do to balance his budget for the state, but also some of the difficulties that we would experience if certain revenues were taken away from the city. On the page, the first page with the bar chart that talks about state revenues, you can see there are a number of state revenues that we receive. And the first one is shared revenue block grant, which is $657,000, or another way of describing that. That would be about 18 cents on the tax rate, because if that revenue goes away and expenditures stay the same, then you have to make it up somewhere, and typically that would be on the tax rate, the property tax rate, or about 18 cents. The next area is rooms and meals tax. And for fiscal 10, we had projected $921,000 that would come into as a revenue, as a general revenue. And that was one of the revenues that the Governor had indicated that he wanted to suspend, and that would have caused us about a 25% increase in our tax rate. But just on Friday, we found that the Governor was able to get clarification from Washington as it relates to the use of stimulus money for education. So the $60 million that he would have saved from the Meals and Rooms tax being suspended, he's able to make up through the use of stimulus money for education, for the education grants that would come to cities and towns. At least, that's my understanding. And again, I want to preface something here, that this is fast-moving, information changes readily. We don't know from day-to-day, out of the entire stimulus proposal, the specifics on how money can be spent. So we're relying on information that comes out of the Governor's Office and what he has to rely on, which comes out of Washington. So that $921,000, we're going to include in our proposed budget, because we can be reasonably assured that the Governor and the Legislature will leave that money alone and use the stimulus money to replace the $60 million that would have been made up from the Meals and Rooms. So that $921,000 stays in. Highway block grant is about $370,000 next year. We anticipate a slight increase in that, and I know that Councilor Pantolakis and the Legislature may increase that more depending on what happens with the gasoline tax, but I don't suspect it's going to be substantially more, but possibly a minor amount. Then we have state aid landfill. This is a grant that we've been receiving over the years as it relates to the Coakley landfill and the closure of that landfill. And then the money we receive from bonded debt, the amount of money that we receive for reimbursement for our school projects. Those are the major state revenues that we receive. One area that we're not sure of right now, which we're still waiting for the Legislature to move forward on, is the transition aid that we know may be coming as a result of the new legislation from last year on the education funding formula. And that may mean $220,000 more to the city. We don't know. We would have to wait for the Legislature to get closer to its deliberations, and I believe, Laura, that hasn't changed. I know there was a move to try to amend that, but that hasn't been successful. So in all likelihood, I will instruct the Finance Director to include that $220,000 in the budget unless something unusual happens at the Legislature. But as you may see, as you may be aware, then, we're still short about $430,000 from what we anticipated. So that's going to be one of our challenges. Now, moving on to the next page, I'm going to ask Judy Blanchard to talk about what's happening with our revenues and a couple of other areas, investments and motor vehicles.
On the second page, talking about the investment rate, and there's actually no surprise to anyone that the investment income has dropped dramatically for all of us. And how it affects the city of Portsmouth is, the first chart actually demonstrates the percentage, the average percentage rate that we've received over the entire year. This is funding that, a certain amount of cash we need to keep available in a checking account for the day-to-day operations of the city. And just if you look back on the fiscal year '06, we're averaging over 3%, and you see a dramatic drop in fiscal year '09 at less than 1%. And even as of today, the beginning of the fiscal year was a little bit higher, and as of today, we're seeing like .27% in this account. Now, we do invest in CDs and other vehicles that we can earn slightly higher interest rates, but those interest rates are dropping dramatically. So the bottom chart actually shows the cash available, the investment income that we have earned over the last few years. And again, you see in '08, we had kind of a peak, a little bit over a million dollars. And now, we're projecting, in fiscal year '10, we're projecting a drop to about $450,000. So that's quite a dramatic change.
One of the things I want for the people at home and for those in the audience to understand, that we do adopt an investment policy every year in accordance with state statutes. Everything we invest in is 100% collateralized, so that, you know, we cannot do, we typically would be in treasuries or certificates of deposits that are 100% collateralized, so that there is no risk to the money. So that's why the rates are very low, and you can understand why we're required to do that, given what the disruptions that happened in the stock market and other places where we really wouldn't place our money. We place our money in 100% collateralized instruments, and that's for obvious reasons.
That's correct. And then, so in fiscal year '10, we're actually looking at a reduction in a revenue estimate of about $250,000 there. Another area that is mostly affected by the economy is motor vehicle registrations. That's on the next page. This first graph here is just a comparison over eight months from each fiscal year. I show a comparison from '07, '08, '09, going from July to February, so an eight-month period. But we've seen some drop, and then about a 2% drop in the number of registrations. But the bottom chart actually shows the actual income from these registrations, and of course, there's kind of a combination between, there's about a 7% drop that we're anticipating with motor vehicle registration income, and it's a combination of the number of registrations, which we're only seeing a 2% drop, but also the value of the vehicle, because the rate is based on a mill rate according to the value of the vehicle. People aren't buying as many cars. We're seeing the same number of registrations, but purchasing new cars with higher values. So we're also anticipating another about approximately $250,000 there in reduction in revenue.
So as you can see, not only are we dealing, when we go forward with the budget workshops in the near future for fiscal 10 regarding the expenditure side, we also have to deal with the revenue side, which ultimately affects the tax rate. And so we're looking at probably about, I would say, $900,000 that we are getting, we're going to have less than last year. It is going to be a challenge for us. Hopefully, there may be additional stimulus money that comes through, but I would not be too hopeful on that, as a general revenue. We have been hearing discussions that there may be another $20 million coming through under a Title I formula, and that could add additional money to the city, but we're unsure how that can be spent. And I know I'm talking to the school department about that. Presently, under Title I, I believe you're receiving about $550,000 or thereabouts. This would be in addition to the Title I of 550, another, we estimate, of 322,000. But we're not sure if this is just a formula that's used to distribute the money, or it's a formula that's used to not only distribute the money, but also to use the Title I requirements. So that's what we're unsure about. So I won't be including any of that money, the 322,000, as a revenue source in the fiscal 10 budget. What I would say to the City Council is that my goal will continue to be to bring the budget in as you've asked for and try to have no tax increase with the provision that I will identify within the budget those areas in the revenue side that were out of our control, such as the reduction in the revenue sharing and possibly other reductions that may come out. And say, we would have had a tax, a no tax rate increase except for this X amount of increase because of these reasons, the county tax and because of that lost revenue from the revenue sharing. If in the event that, over the next few months, we find that money can be utilized in the general revenue sense from the stimulus, we, when we go to Department of Revenue Administration in October to set our tax rate, we will show that additional revenue on the revenue side of the budget. And if we have, let's say, a tax increase of 25 cents or 50 cents or whatever it is, and the revenue equals the amount to bring that down, the DRA will bring that down, and we won't have a tax increase for that fiscal year. But if there is, the revenue has to go directly to Title I and has to be used in that way, then we will have probably an increase in the tax rate based on the amount of revenue we're losing on revenue sharing. Now, the Legislature still has a long way to go in their budget deliberations, and I know that Councilor Pantolakis would probably agree, that a lot of things could happen between now and in the time that the state adopts its budget. And hopefully, the state will take and reinstate the revenue sharing so that we don't have to make these types of choices. So I wanted to go through that. What I'd like to do is, Your Honor, open it up for any questions as it relates to revenues, and then I'd like to have Diana Fogarty talk about some of the freeze, actually the vacancies in the budget.
Okay, understanding that we're going to try to keep the discussion or inquiry to revenue, does anyone want to weigh in at this point? The other items, of course, as we go forward are going to be human resources and personnel, and then, of course, some more about the stimulus package. Anyone about revenue, or, yes, I can?
Do we have any idea on what we're looking at, an increase in the tax base itself, from new construction, finished projects, and so forth?
Very minimal, about $10 million growth, which is the lowest we've had in a number of years. Now, that being said, many communities in New England have a negative growth. Many of my counterparts in other parts of New England are showing a negative growth. We're going to be at about a $10 million growth, which is very negligible for the city of Portsmouth in our history over the last few years. So that, and that would be what we would use as the outside limit.
Counsel Dwyer?
This may not be a possible answer, but is the money that is being talked about for the rooms and meals tax, is that coming from that Governor's discretionary portion of the education stabilization?
My understanding, and I can't speak for the Governor's Office, but my understanding is they received clarification from Washington on the use of some of that education aid money. And I can't get into all the specifics because I don't know them. But that equaled about $60 million, which you were then able to shift to the education funding formula to help free up the money for the Meals and Rooms tax. Does that make sense? I mean, that's what I've been told, and I can only go by what I've been told.
And I know Counsel Dwyer is thinking more about that, in that, when we talk about the stimulus part of that, we can talk more about what the evolving understanding of everyone is, as to how the stimulus money may or may not show up on the bottom line for us. Counsel Pantolakis, but right now, keep it to revenue and...
I just think that, he did say that they've been cleared to put this money into educational funding, but I think we also have to understand in this budget, as well as the budgets that's coming, that these are one-shot deals. And he is really, you know, he's cutting the state budget right down to bare bones. And when that happens, it comes down on the counties and the cities. So there was even talk today that we might give back the revenue sharing, but I don't know where that would come from.
Right.
But it's like the first quarter of a football game.
Yeah.
Well put. Counsel Dwyer?
Well, just to mark one thing, and it's probably Judy's hassle, but, you know, that money has particular educational purposes associated with it. There are two types of title one. So the tracking, my only point is, the tracking, the accountability for how that would be used for educational purposes is something we need to remember. It's going to be a much different kind of burden than we've typically had, because it's not like revenue-sharing money. It has to be tracked to particular purposes. So what that will mean is extensive.
Right. And my point exactly is that the money that you see here on the first sheet, the shared revenue, the rooms and meals, highway block grants, those types of things can be used for general purposes and as a general revenue. Whereas the Title I, we need to be very careful in how we recognize that and how it's used, and that's something that will become clearer, I'm sure, over the next few months.
But I just, there are two kinds of Title I, and absolutely with the Title I, but that money that they're using out of the state stabilization education money, also, while it doesn't have to follow regulations, has to be for particular purposes. So we will have to track that we use that portion of it. There will be no trouble doing that, because we obviously need a lot more than that for education. It just means a lot more burden on the financials.
Correct. Counsel Kennedy?
Being the Title I coordinator in my own district, my guess is that money will not be able to be used for anything but Title I, and it's for not supplanting things. So it's going to be new programs, looking at more, supporting more students. So I would pretty much say, from what I'm hearing right now, that's pretty much off the table to look at this. But I just want to agree with Counsel Pantolakis. I think we have to be really clear, these are all one-time deals. And I personally, in hearing from the community members, and hearing from some of my friends and acquaintances who have lost a lot of money in the stock market, we're looking at a long term. So I think we need to keep that in mind, that this is all one-time deals.
I'm just going to ask, too, as we consider, again, further down on the agenda, we'll talk a little bit more specifically about the stimulus as well. And at this point, we're talking about revenue sources, noting from whence they come and the size that they are and what the impact is. Any questions or concerns about revenue impacts before we move on? Okay, let's go.
I'd like to have Diana Fogarty just go over, more or less in a macro view, some of the vacant positions. Again, I want to say that I believe... Again, I want to say that I believe that, within the confines of an individual's budget, the police department, fire department, school department, and municipal, if there's a budget laid out for fiscal 10, and if that budget is laid out in a way that is responsive to the City Council, it's my belief that then, department heads should make those determinations on how to fill those positions. For example, I'll start off by talking about the city. We do have a chief planner's position that we'll have open by the end of the fiscal year. And we anticipate putting that chief planner's position in the budget for fiscal year 10. It is my belief that we should fill that position, because it's a very unique position, and it really is a type of position that will save us money in the long run for not making mistakes that we might make in our land use process. So that's one area. The other area that I would talk about may be an area of the GIS. We have an individual that has just taken a position in the private sector, and that position will be open. But we only have one GIS person for the whole city. Now, I'll be talking with the Public Works Department about how we might want to reconstitute that position, but ultimately, we're going to have to have somebody coordinating our GIS programming, because everything relies on it now. All our mapping, our sewer line, distribution systems, I mean, I could just go on and on and talk about, in fact, even public safety relies on some of the GIS technologies. So those are the areas. But when it comes to a position, there's a couple of positions in Public Works that we are going to look at retooling and see if we can reallocate resources and maybe eliminate a position. So we'll be doing that. So I just think it's important that the council understand that the department heads will be looking at those things. My intent, and what I've told the municipal side of the budget, is I'm going to try to comply with the City Council's mandate of no increase. And when I, and if I do comply with that mandate, it's my belief that I've made those reallocation of resources in the best way that I feel necessary to run the operation. So I would feel comfortable filling the positions that are left in the budget. That's just what I think is important for the council to understand. You know, you have a fire chief, you have a police chief, you have a superintendent of schools. You certainly have people in the Public Works and other areas that are going to commit to try to bring this budget in in such a way as to address the needs that the City Council has laid out. Diana, you want to talk about, in general, some of the positions, not in particular the positions, but in the overall sense?
And right now, we currently have 14 opens throughout the whole city. That includes the school, the fire, the police, municipal, water, and sewer. So there's a total of 14 positions. That number can change day to day, because I've had a lot of employees starting to ask me questions about retirement, so they're starting to think about retiring. So that number could increase. We do have eight anticipated openings due to people who have put in their retirement paperwork for next fiscal year. So we're looking at a total of 23 positions throughout the whole system.
And again, those positions range, like I said, for one person doing one type of job to another, maybe a truck driver's position. And so each department, I will be encouraging to look at those and to see how they can be adjusted, if they can be, and to live in the goals that have been laid down by the City Council. I've always said this is a temporary hiring freeze. I mean, I think it's, I know that the superintendent of schools has a couple of positions that he feels necessary to fill, and maybe you can speak to that, Doctor. Dr. Lester.
Thank you, Mr. Bohanko. I guess I'd like to mirror what you just said about the, very similar to the chief planning position. These are the three positions that I have, one being the special education director, another being a business clerical, are very important in order for us to be efficient. And it's, without those positions, it would be very easy to not be as efficient as we'd like to be. We have several retirements. We're putting those on hold for now. Usually, at this point, we've advertised those positions. We haven't done that yet. We're holding on those. The other position that I have is a temporary custodian at the middle school. And that doesn't sound like it would be so important, except it does, if you think of a systems approach, it does affect what we're doing in the system. And rather than pay somebody for the next six weeks, pay our present people overtime, which we don't have, we'd like to hire somebody to work the next six weeks as a temp and work at the middle school and be able to deal with the custodial duties that we have. But I'd just like to mirror, as I said, what the city manager said, and that is, we're looking at these positions, these are positions that are key to the functioning of the organization. And we'd like to be able to fill those, knowing that we have to look at other things. We are retooling positions as well. And not to just talk about my own situation, because I know there are other positions here, but there are some things we really need to do in order to conduct an efficient business, so to speak, and work with the city.
If we could hear from, thank you, Dr. Lester, if we could hear from police and fire chiefs as well, in the same vein, that'd be helpful, because we're trying to get a handle on this and come to some understanding.
Sure.
Or whoever wishes to go forward on behalf of whichever entity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jerry Howe, Chairman of the Police Commission. As Diana said, we have 14 vacancies presently in the city, and the police department has seven of those. We are working on our budget. We came in at 1.45. That was prior to what happened with the governor's budget, and we are continually revisiting our budget to do everything we can for the city. But just as an example of what can happen without filling positions, we have two dispatchers, two vacancies in dispatch right now. We are doing 84 hours a month of overtime in dispatch to fill that. That translates to $137,000 a year in overtime just for dispatch. We have five vacancies in patrol. We have records that show the fewer numbers of officers we have, the higher our overtime, because contractual obligations for minimum staffing levels. So right now, the vacancies that we're carrying are having a substantial impact on our budget. And I'll turn it over to Chief Magid.
Thank you. In prepping our budget for next fiscal year, one of the things that we heard from the council last fiscal year was to try to find ways to consolidate positions. With that in mind, our information systems manager left, and we were able to consolidate that function with the city. So this budget that we're submitting has that one less position, full-time position. We've also reduced our animal control officer position from a full-time position to a half-time. We've cut a part-time youth advocate position out of our juvenile division. And we've also made other cuts in the budget as well. Right now, we're at a critical point when it comes to staffing in the police department. As Commissioner Howe just told you, we are down five police officers. That's 13% of my patrol division. That means two off, two positions on the day shift, two positions on the evening shift, and one position on the midnight shift. I'm also down two dispatchers. And I know Commissioner Howe said that that translated into 84 hours of overtime a month. I need to correct that. That's 84 hours of overtime a week that I'm doing in dispatch right now. I have five conditional offers of employment out there for police officers, and I have one for dispatch that I can't go forward with right now because of this hiring freeze. And some of these candidates are qualified, and they are looking at positions in other places. I'm running the risk of losing them if I can't hire them. You may recall that the PS Comm study that the city commissioned many years ago recommended that we have 14 dispatchers in our dispatch center. We're authorized to have 11. Right now, we're at nine. I need 10 in order to cover all of my staffing positions. So I need to fill at least one of those two positions. If I don't, it means increased overtime. There's no way around it. I have a chart here which will, shows you that as my staffing declines, my overtime goes up. Forced overtime means a decrease in morale. It means an increase in sick time. It means an increase in forced overtime. And it's a vicious cycle that you can't get out of. It makes it very difficult to train when we're at minimum manning. It increases our response time, which in turn has an effect on safety for our officers and also for the public. If the issue is being at 0% for next fiscal year, what I need to do, would like to do, is fill a minimum of three of these police officer positions and one dispatch position. That would leave me a cushion of two police officer positions, a dispatch position, plus I have two impending retirements in that fiscal year. So that gives me plenty of room to get to 0%, if that's what it comes down to. But right now, at this point in time, I would like to get permission to hire at least three police officers and one dispatch. It's critical.
Thank you, Chief. I'll hear from Chief Leclair, and then start to, well, we'll decide where we go from there. Chief Leclair.
Good evening. Right now, we are at full staff. And full staff means that each shift has 14 firefighters assigned to it. We have a minimum staffing now of 13, both day and night. Next year's budget of 0% provides for filling 13 firefighters during the day and 13 firefighters at night. For our operation, that is the bare minimum. You get past that, and we lose our cushion to the 13. We no longer have the 14th. If we go below 13, something is either not staffed like it should be, which is already below standard, or something's going to stop. Right now, we have no vacancies. We have a possibility of two retirements, but I haven't seen that paperwork yet. It would be essential that we fill those positions as they come up.
Your Honor, thank you. Again, this was always intended to be temporary in nature until we could have this conversation. And I think both the superintendent, the police chief, and the fire chief have outlined very specifically what they believe the pros and cons are as it relates to continuing a hiring freeze. My suggestion to the City Council, and since it was my hiring freeze, I would suggest that, and I will work with each of the department heads, to go with their recommendations where they make sense. And I know that, as they would describe to you, there are very clear reasons why the superintendent, the police chief want to fill various positions. They're well fought out and well articulated. Again, as the chief said, I think he really summed it up, that he will be looking at how he will be able to continue forward into the next budget. And I will be doing the same, along with other department heads. So it would be my recommendation, Your Honor, to the council, or at least my suggestion, that I work on a flexible basis with the department heads on the filling of the positions using their best judgment, where they feel appropriate.
Thank you for that recommendation. Before we open it up on that discussion, I think one of the things that the council probably can do is assist in the giving of direction, in an informal sense, given that this is a work session. And I think the point being, and councils want to speak to, you know, is it about people? Is it about money? We've all talked about where the targets are going to be. Councilors, if you want to weigh in, it's a good time to talk about the city manager's recommendation, make inquiries of the department heads, whatever you prefer. Counsel Hetmanek.
I would support the city manager's suggestion. This is really about money and trying to achieve a zero budget, and I don't know that we have the skills to tamper with your hiring policies. You are paid to run your departments, you're experts in your fields, and we should give you the latitude to do that, as long as you can try to achieve the zero budget. So I support it.
Counsel Kennedy, then the Assistant Mayor.
I really support it. I think that we asked for 0% budget. It's not up to us to figure out how you folks get there. It's up to you. We hire you. We hire people professionalism in each of their areas, and we ask you to give us guidance. So I agree with the city manager wholeheartedly. I would hate to have someone tell me how I have to run my budget to the finest of details. But I do respect when a budget committee or a council tells me what the number they're trying to achieve and is upfront about that number. So I agree wholeheartedly with the city manager's suggestion.
Assistant Mayor Blaylock, and then Counsel Smith.
Yeah, I concur that, you know, and I, listening to the chiefs and superintendent, you know, we've got to be very careful that we don't take steps backwards. You know, I think the temporary hiring freeze is important to kind of get, you know, to see where we were. We certainly don't want to jeopardize or risk any dip in public safety and dip in the effectiveness of our schools, because, you know, and I know this council's spoken about the goal of zero increase in the budget. But I'm one that, you know, I hope we take a pragmatic look at everything and, you know, do the best we can. However, it is a one-year budget. We have to also just keep an eye, and I know we're going to be a long climb out of this economic mess we're in now, but we just have to keep an eye that we're not setting ourselves up for the year after and the year after that, that at some point, if we take a step backwards, the two steps forward could be much more costly. And I just want to throw that out there. But I, and one of the measures that I would not want to see would be to keep a hiring freeze, to not fill these positions, and end up with a less effective police department, a less effective fire department, because, you know, that's just something that we cannot afford.
Thank you. Counsel Smith.
Thank you.
Counsel Dwyer, after him.
I don't look at this as a change of what the '010 budget is going to be. We've asked them to come up with a 0% increase. Looks like that's what everyone's coming in at, and I think it's terrific. I see this hiring freeze as a temporary in nature, but in how to save money in today's budget. And any money that's left over in today's budget is going into contingency, and it's saved for, maybe for overtime costs. It has extra for the benefits. So while I think it's fine, and I really hope everyone's coming in at 0, because that's what we've asked them to do, I see the hiring freeze as what's going to help us in the '09 budget. And if there can be money left over, you put it into the contingency fund, because if they do come in at a 0% increase, and they have to make up for it in overtime, they're going to have to come back to us and look for money out of the contingency. I know, and not to pick on the police department, but I know last year you were down, I think, four dispatchers when we were going through the budget process. And we're still down two. I don't know if you've filled them all and, you know, we've lost some people or not. But I know how hard the police department works at, you know, making sure everything is covered, and they do a great job at it, and we appreciate it. But, you know, if you can get away with just hiring one, I think the temporary freeze comes down to, that the city manager has the final call to be if it is, if we bring them in or not. But I'd like to see the hiring freeze remain in with the city manager having the final word on it until the rest, until the end of this fiscal year.
If I might, Your Honor?
Please.
Could I speak to that? Although I don't totally disagree with Counselor Smith, one thing I would have to say is that, as the chief laid out to you, just, we'll take the example of the dispatcher position, it really would be more productive for us to replace those positions. And in the areas of replacing police officers, even though I, you know, there are collective bargaining issues that I'm sure we're talking about right now, in collective bargaining, the chief has laid out what would be a dollar and cents type of scenario in terms of cost-benefit. And I will work very closely with him. He articulated, I believe, that he would like to go forward with three officers and one dispatcher, which makes a lot of sense, because I'm sure he and his staff has done the analysis to say, look, you know, we're going to be at a point where this line's going to cross, where we're actually going to have diminishing returns. And I would agree with that, and I would support that. So, you know, I think the council's pretty clear where they want to go in '10, and every department head is very clear as to what that goal is. So I would ask that I be allowed to continue as I described, and be as flexible as I can as department heads make their case, and clearly, they will make their case as to what makes sense in filling positions. Not one of us here wants to fill a position that's not necessary.
Thank you, John. More commentary from counselors. Counsel Kennedy.
I would disagree with that. And one of the strongest reasons to disagree with that is, is that in the school department, they have to hire now for next year. that is, is that in the school department, they have to hire now for next year. And if they don't get a special ed director, it's going to cost us a lot more money. And the fact that they won't be able to bring revenues in, there won't be grants written, and keeping kids in district, doing the best programs, the most economical programs. So I really feel that we cannot keep a hiring freeze. We need to look at next year, and we need to look at what's best for next year.
Councilor Pendelakis, Councilor Dwyer, Councilor Smith?
I just would like to say that I thank the departments for all they're doing, and I'm really thrilled to death that we're not having to do what other cities and towns have to do with starting to lay off and whatnot. I do think the hiring freeze should stay on. I've worked all of my life, and when we lose somebody, you pick up the slack from somebody else, so. But I do feel that we need the police officers, we need to keep the fire department at their level, and also at the school department. But we need to look forward, not just for this, this budget, but into the future, because it's going to get worse before it gets better.
Council Dwyer, Councilor Smith?
Yeah, I, I'm not an across-the-board kind of person, so I fully support what the city manager is talking about, and I'm especially pleased to hear the thinking, the kind of thinking that Chief Magnet was sharing, because what I see happening in the private sector right now, and I see it happening in the nonprofit sector, is people are restructuring and thinking about the future. They're not, they're not saying across-the-board anything, because it just doesn't work. Only in the public sector would we say something like that. That in, in the nonprofit sector, which, you know, has certainly hit pretty hard right now, people are really restructuring, rethinking jobs, combining jobs, looking at jobs differently. And, and a couple of organizations where I'm a board member that have taken really significant financial hits and then have started to do some restructuring, you know, the executive director said, I hate to say it, but we're already realizing efficiencies, and we should have done this three years ago. So I know that this city has been very, I know we don't have a fat in there for easy restructuring, that the city has been very thoughtful about that, but, but I, I, I think a freeze is a distracting kind of thing. I think we need to be thinking about, how are we going to restructure for the future and deliver services over the next three to five years? And so I would definitely want that longer-term thinking, which, you know, might, might require a different thinking this, in this period of time than it will four years from now. But, but I know we also can't get there overnight in departments, so it's the longer-term thinking, and I'm, I'm hoping that that's the kind of thinking that will be shared with us when we go into this budget, because we're not just, we can't just be thinking about this as a one-year thing, but what's the platform that this is giving us for, you know, a five-year trajectory?
Thanks, Chris. Councilor Dwyer. Councilor Smith?
Thank you. It is my understanding, and maybe I didn't make this point clear enough, that if Doctor Lister needs to hire somebody to handle special education, he can go up to the city manager and hire that position, if we give the city manager power to do that. So keeping the firing, the hiring freeze in place, all we're doing is just funneling it right through one person, the city manager, so that we have just more control on it for the rest of this fiscal year. Am I misunderstood on that?
Well, as I said earlier on, I mean, I will take the recommendations of the department heads as they feel it's necessary to fill positions. I think we're saying the same thing, only I'm saying it a little differently than you. And clearly, if the chief lays it out and says, this is what I need, and these are the reasons, I certainly would support that. And same thing with the superintendent of schools.
Thank you. Any other commentary from councilors on this before we, I want to just speak briefly about the stimulus after this? Any other comments here? I'm just going to add my two cents and say I appreciate the efforts of the department heads in their departments to look at how to manage this situation. I certainly support the voice of, the voice of the city manager in that I think it's important to manage, we respect that if you hire two people and cut overtime, that's a good thing. We don't, you know, I think, want to be draconian in that nature, and I think Council Smith has explained himself well in that regard as well. One thing I do want to say, and I rarely do such a thing, but I, I'm glad that this discussion came up at this point in the process. I rarely talk about how much I hear, but I will tell you, I believe there is significant support in the community for very, very stringent budget objectives, and I don't think people, thinking of what, what the Assistant Mayor has said, people don't want to see our services cut, and I appreciate that there's an inherent tension there, but there's a significant amount of support for these budget constraints out there. And I, I don't say that with any, anything other than an acknowledgement of, that's where we are, and that's where we are in the time. So we appreciate the hard work and the consternation that it causes you, but we appreciate the, the potential results you've brought us this evening, and I think those are, those are good things from a management perspective. Do we need to, I think, just so that we can clarify with John, we're not voting for anything formally here. I think it's a fair assumption to say that there is effectively not a hiring freeze. However, everyone has expressed a good-faith desire to scrutinize the issue of hiring and make sure that cost-effective decisions are made that won't increase budget expenditures, and you'll work with people in that regard.
Right. I'll have the conversation with each of the major department heads and, and I'm, you know, about their hiring. And certainly, they know what the parameters are for next year.
Okay. Any further discussion on that point? Councilor Kennedy?
A quick question. So are we having still a hiring freeze or not? I guess any clarification?
Well, it really, in my mind, what I will be doing is basically having, after this meeting, I'll be sitting with each of the department heads that have needs, and we'll go through those. And I know that superintendent and chief have thought about that, and, and if, when, my point is, if they recommend, as the chief has said, he has to fill three patrol positions and one dispatcher, and that's what he wants to do, then I will support that. And I will support the same thing with the superintendent. I'll meet with all the department heads that I have interaction with, and if there's a position that we can hold, hold open until June 30th, we'll hold it open until June 30th.
And speaking to Councilor Smith's concerns and others, I think what, what's inherent in what the city manager says and what the department heads have agreed to do is make decisions that are cost-effective and, and speak to the concern that a hiring freeze addresses, but deal with it in a business management way that allows us to have savings but also have services that function appropriately, and they allow them to manage within their departments. Just to briefly, before we get to the end of this, to speak about the stimulus, do you have anything further that you want to say?
Well, let me, let me, well, let me just say a couple things, that we have been working with every department. We have, in fact, I have something after, you can grab it. I have it from Congressman Shay Porter's office, a copy of what is coming in as stimulus money. A lot of the stimulus money is coming through existing grants, and we're, David Moore's here from Community Development. I've asked David to coordinate just information about stimulus and competitively applying for stimulus money. And we have, and we will be applying for the competitive type of aspects of stimulus. I know the police are looking at things, and certainly, we will do that. I don't want everybody to have huge expectations that there's all this money coming in. You know, of the, the $870 billion, 13 percent is really coming through for these types of grants for infrastructure improvements. And so we, a lot of that money at the state level will be used for highways and bridges and those types of things, which are all good things. But there's only a limited amount of discretionary money. In our community development block grant area, we're going to see an increase there. So we're seeing money coming through and funneled through, through your typical grant sources, from the federal government through the state government. Our water grant, we have an application in for that. We're evaluating the pros and cons on that. So everything is, the city of Portsmouth and its staff have applied for whatever's available out there that we feel is necessary for the community, that can add value to the community. So that's where we're at. Will we be successful? We're hopeful, so we'll see.
I'd just like to add to that. Thank you, John, and I thank everyone for, us all trying to get our arms around what this stimulus does. In speaking with state officials, officials with the governor's office, and informally with officials from other departments, as I have, as I'm sure Councilor Kennedy has, as I'm sure Councilor Dwyer has, and many people in this room, this is on a grander scale very much a work in progress. And one of the things that Portsmouth does a pretty good job at is figuring out how to make a case for money that works for its community. One of the other things Portsmouth needs to do, and I'm sure we as councilors and departments will scrutinize, is the problem of creating a program that we don't want to have three years from now. So with those two ideas in mind, this is a regular process of communication with the office of the governor, as they communicate regularly with the federal government, as all the departments bring that information into the state, and we work with them. It will be an ongoing process. We will continue to update everybody. If you learn things in your own jobs and work that, that we need to know, nobody knows what the book is on this all the way through, so any and all information's appreciated, but we'll continue to work with the governor's office and, and other state departments. And as you know, our city departments will be ready to go, and they already are. Councilor Novak?
Could we know if there's any possible money for a middle school?
To my knowledge, it is too soon for us to actually know.
That would not be specific to that particular project right now. It is, as the mayor said, too early to know.
They just aren't, if, we spoke with, I spoke with the governor's deputy chief of staff Friday afternoon, and the initial report that the city manager gave you with the numbers and how that affected revenue is about as specific as they're ready to get so far. Anecdotally, I ran into some other state officials, and they're all looking at it hard, but there's a lot to digest and a lot to figure out, and likewise, there is for the city. So this is a complex endeavor, and we're going to work hard right through as we all get to the wire with a budget of June 30 to do the best we can. But it's a work in progress, and we'll try to report regularly. We want everyone to, if you hear something from, you know, your aunt in Nevada who's doing something with the stimulus, and we all figure out a way to justify things that aren't going to hurt us, we want to do that. Councilor Kennedy?
I didn't write it down, but WMUR tonight put on a website for state and federal for the public and also for the public to look at. I didn't know if we could put that on Channel 22, maybe that website, so people could.
I put a link.
A link or?
Thank you. That's a good point. We all got to learn about this and educate ourselves. Anyone else with anything that they would like to offer regarding this evening's subject matter? With that, I appreciate your attendance and your hard work, and we'll see you at the next meeting.